Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Ontario Human Rights Commission Right to Read Inquiry Public Hearing. I'm Michael Harris. I am the manager of the Legal Services and Inquiry Office, the office that is conducting the inquiry, and I will be facilitating the event tonight. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are on the traditional territory of the Tsipowas of Thames, of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames, and Lani Lenape Nation. I also wish to recognise the long history of First Nation, Inuit, and Métis peoples in Ontario. As we begin, I would like to introduce the panel, and then I will ask the Chief Commissioner to come and say a few words before I then go over the format and some housekeeping points. Rima Khaja, closest to me, is a counsel, a senior counsel at the Commission, and she's a member of the inquiry team. Nika Farahany is also a counsel at the Commission and a member of the team. Reni Mundani is a chief commissioner. She was appointed in October of 2015. Reni, by profession, is a lawyer and has a Masters in International Human Rights Law from New York University. Before being appointed chief commissioner, she was the executive director of the award-winning International Human Rights Programme at the University Faculty of Law. You would have seen as you've come in that we have all the members of our inquiry team scattered as they're doing different functions, and we thank them and we thank you for being here tonight, and I will now ask the Chief Commissioner to say a few words.
I get to stand on a step to seem taller. Good evening, welcome, thank you for being here. This is our second public hearing for our Right to Read Inquiry. This inquiry looks at human rights issues facing students with reading disabilities in public school. Our first hearing was in Brampton, and we expect to have more hearings later on this year and into next year in Thunder Bay and Ottawa. Tonight, we are going to hear from students, parents, guardians, and educators who are going to tell us their stories and their lived experiences. The Commission is also hearing from families and educators across the province through surveys, meetings, and interviews, and community visits. Already, we've had an overwhelming response to this inquiry. Over a thousand individuals and organisations have contacted the Human Rights Commission to share their stories with us. For over 20 years, the Human Rights Commission has promoted the right to education for students with disabilities. We've litigated cases at the Human Rights Tribunal of Ontario and even at the Supreme Court of Canada. We've issued policy guidance to help educators fulfil their obligations under the Human Rights Code. But yet, we continue to hear that there is a wide gulf between the vision of the code and the reality in our classrooms. Ontario's Education Act recognises that all students must be provided with the opportunity to realise their potential and develop into highly skilled, knowledgeable, caring citizens who contribute to society. Yet, in classrooms across Ontario, there are children who fail to learn to read, a critical and foundational skill. This is simply unacceptable. We know that students who cannot read will struggle in all aspects of school, from language to maths. They're more vulnerable to mental health disabilities, behavioural issues, bullying, and even dropping out. People with low literacy are often underemployed, and they're overrepresented in the homeless population and in jail. Many kids who struggle to read have a learning disability. For example, dyslexia affects at least 10% of the population. Yet despite its prevalence, the Commission is concerned that students with reading disabilities are not getting the supports they need. This is troubling because reading disabilities can be remediated with science-based approaches, including early screening, intervention, and support. Learning to read is not a privilege. It is a basic and essential human right. That's why last October, the Commission launched a public inquiry into human rights issues affecting students with reading disabilities in Ontario's public schools. This is a province-wide inquiry that will evaluate our public education system and assess whether we are realising the right to read. We'll assess whether schools are using scientific, evidence-based approaches to meet the needs of students with reading disabilities. We'll hear from parents, students, and educators across the province, and we'll investigate practices across a representative sample of eight English-speaking public school boards: Hamilton Wentworth, Kiwattan Patricia, Lakehead, London Catholic, Ottawa Carlton, Peel, Simcoe Muskoka Catholic, and Thames Valley. We will assess these boards against five benchmarks that are widely recognised as essential to effective and systematic approach to teaching reading. These are: the use of universal design for learning, mandatory early screening, the use of effective reading intervention programmes, appropriate accommodation, and timely psychoeducational assessments. First, we will look at whether Ontario is using curriculum and teaching methods that are effective for the largest number of students. This approach is called "universal design for learning" because we know there are methods that have been scientifically proven to be most effective in teaching all children to read. In terms of early screening, we know that time is of the essence when it comes to reading disabilities. Our inquiry will look at whether boards are mandating the use of scientific, evidence-based screening tools in kindergarten or Grade 1 to identify students who may have reading disabilities. We'll look at the availability and use of science-based reading intervention programmes and also explore whether boards provide effective accommodation, because even with early intervention, students with reading disabilities may require and are entitled to receive accommodation. These might include assistive technologies like screen readers, alternative formats for assignments, or extra time on tests. Finally, we'll consider whether there's clear criteria for when psychoeducational assessments are offered or required, and how associated waiting lists are managed and maintained. Beyond looking at the eight school boards, we'll also request information about teacher training from Ontario's 13 faculties of education. We may request information or assistance from the Ministry of Education and the Ontario College of Teachers. We've retained Dr Linda Siegel, an internationally recognised expert in reading disabilities, to assist us with this inquiry. We are hearing from parents, students, and educators across the province through our surveys. The results of these surveys will help us understand and report on the experiences of students with reading disabilities and assess whether they have meaningful access to education as required by the Human Rights Code. Many of you here today have already completed our survey, and I thank you for doing that. We'll be launching another survey shortly for educators, and of course, we'll be holding these public hearings. The Commission will also be visiting communities served by the boards identified in our inquiry, and our goal is to release an inquiry report with findings and recommendations later this year. The ultimate goal, of course, of our inquiry is to make the right to read a reality for students with reading disabilities, so thank you for being here tonight and supporting
Thank you, Chief Commissioner. And before we begin, may I just ask, if you have your phone with you, can you please put it on silence or vibrate so that we be as least disruptive as possible? Thank you. Tonight, our inquiry panel will hear presentations on issues identified in the Right to Read Inquiry, terms of reference. We have this space until about nine o'clock, so that allows us to hear from eight or nine presenters to the panel. As the Chief Commissioner said to date, we've received over a thousand responses to our Right to Read Inquiry from around the province. The participants presenting tonight completed a survey and were selected to make a presentation based on, because they represent a diversity of experiences and perspective. Of course, we appreciate that there are many of you in this room who also have a story to tell and would like to tell that story. So later on in our session, we have a 30-minute open mic period that will allow some of you in the room to share your story, and I understand many of you have already signed up for that session, and we will do our best to hear from as many as you who have signed up as time allows. Tonight, we're here to hear from the presenters, to listen and to record personal experiences and stories regarding reading disabilities. The event is not an opportunity for us, for you, to question the panel about the inquiry. It is about the panel to hear from presenters and the public at large, based on those who have signed up. Each presenter will have seven minutes to present, and that will be followed by three minutes that will allow the panel to ask the presenters questions. We ask that all presenters do their best to honour the time. We ask that presenters in speaking be respectful, not name any school, any teachers, but you're free to name a school board. And I will ask presenters to speak as slowly as you can within the timeframe given to allow the captioner to caption what you are saying. You're here, and I'm sure you've seen already, this is a public hearing. It's open to the public. You can see that cameras are in the room. Many of us have cameras. I will tell you that when we did the Brampton session, later on, someone at work sent me a link where someone actually had videoed and put up on YouTube, so just know that the session's being videoed. The Commission's also videoing and live-streaming the session. If you want to follow on live stream, you can go to the OHRC YouTube channel and then add slash live, or you can go to http://bit.ly/315b6m6n69 And thankfully, the captionist is actually capturing that there. Also, please feel free to tweet about the hearing and to use hashtag #righttoread. Now, some of what you will hear tonight may elicit emotional response from the presenters and from members in the crowd. As it is today, it's Bell's Let's Talk Day, so do take a moment to care for yourself, and if you need to excuse yourself from the room, please feel free to do so. Take a break and come back as you choose, but do take care of yourself because there may indeed be some emotional sharing today. In the same light, I ask that we be respectful to the presenters and not interrupt the presenters. And lastly, I will ask the presenters again to speak slowly, but within timeframe. Just in terms of some housekeeping, washrooms are just outside these doors. There is a gender-neutral, barrier-free washroom outside the door to my right and to your left. Women's washroom, immediately outside to the door to my right for the gender-neutral, barrier-free. Door to my left for the women's washroom, and if you just go past the main office, the men's washroom are there. One thing you should know about the washrooms, they're not locked. They do not lock, so please, if you need to use the washroom, please knock, listen before you open the door. At some point, we will take a break, a 15-minute break. That's usually around, it'll be probably around 7:15, we will take a break. We have a table in the back for if there are any kids who are here. We have a table in the back with some colouring that they might be able to use, so we invite them if they're here, and adults, if you want to do that, you can do that as well. It's at the back. And speaking of arts, the OHRC is inviting students to create art, poetry, sound, or video on what the right to read means to me, and submit it to our Right to Read Inquiry. Students can send their work in any common image, document, audio, or video format to the OHRC at communications@ohrc.on.ca. Select pieces may be included in the Right to Read Inquiry report or used on the OHRC's social media with consent. For further details, please visit our website, www.ohrc.on.ca. And now we get to a point where we will actually invite our presenters. And our first presenter, I invite Amanda Evan and Taylor Lockhart to present.[1011.13][1011.13](Applause)
Hello, my name is Amanda, and I would describe myself as a quiet, go-with-the-flow type of person. This is not a position I ever set myself in. Having children that differ slightly from the norm in learning styles has shown me that I can be whatever my kids need me to be. I have three children, two of which have learning disabilities. I have trusted in the school system and was never given a reason to doubt it. My oldest daughter is working her way very successfully through school, so for a child who fits the normal student model, the education system works. With my younger two children, I have experienced similar stories to all of you. The late diagnosis, both in the end of Grade 3, being told to just read to them and they'll learn to read, watch helplessly as your child grows further and further behind, negative self-talk, tummy aches on test days, and many tear-filled hours doing homework that feels, in their view, impossible to finish. Many nights, they can't sleep because they're feeling stupid, they aren't like other kids, and spending thousands of dollars on tutoring just to keep their heads above water. We also paid for our daughter to have a psychoeducational assessment ourselves because our once-happy and confident child was becoming more anxious and sad about school as the days went on. But still, I continue to trust the education system because from our perspective, we have family that either are dyslexic or family that likely are and have not been diagnosed, and I heard their stories of school struggles, but today, they are all successful adults. My biggest struggle, and I'm guessing the reason I was asked to speak today, was trying to navigate the education system here. We moved to Ontario in 2018, the summer before my son, who has dyslexia and dysgraphia, went into Grade 5, and my daughter, who has specific learning disabilities in reading, writing, and maths, entered Grade 3. Up until this point, my children had not had assistive tech and followed the normal school curriculum. When I registered them here at their new school, I explained my son's diagnosis and that their previous school suspected my daughter had learning disabilities too, but that she had not yet been diagnosed. My husband and I could not have been more thrilled when right away, Evan was given access to a Chromebook and shortly thereafter, started to participate in the Power Programme that was available at his school that year. Even Taylor, who had not yet been diagnosed, was being shown how to use a Chromebook so that she would have it to use during EQAO, which she would be taking part in later that same year. Then discussions came of IEPs and IPRCs, both of which I knew absolutely nothing about. When we attended the IPRC for Evan, they mentioned he would be modified to a lower-grade level in reading and maths. I told them, we had met with the previous school prior to moving, they had expressed to us that neither Evan nor Taylor should be part of a modified programme. It was then explained to us that an IEP is a living document that would be reviewed regularly and would change and develop along with the kids. We then made the error we would soon regret. We signed the IEP. Taylor had not yet had the assessment done or had an IPRC meeting, but two, had an IEP developed and was modified in reading and writing, and I signed hers as well. Once Taylor was diagnosed at the end of that year with specific learning disabilities in reading, writing, and maths, I started to join every online group for learning disabilities I could, as I was not familiar with this type of diagnosis and wanted to help her the best way I could at home. It was through these different groups that I read story after story of parents not realising that when you put their children on a modified programme, they are taking away their chances to attend college or university by changing the pathway of their learning. We started to attend parent support groups, which only reinforced what we had done was wrong. I heard people in the education system themselves speak of how they would not put their own children on a modified programme, yet here I was, thinking to myself how no one had mentioned during the IPRC meeting that modification was a last resort, or how it would affect what courses they could take in high school. If I had, I would never have agreed to modify their grade level. I felt I had failed them as a parent. I had unknowingly changed their futures, essentially erasing the years of hard work and tutoring that they had put in just to remain at grade level. I decided then that I would do whatever I could to get them off the modified curriculum. During this time, the stress was overwhelming. I could not sleep and was near tears most of the time, just thinking about the gravity of what I had done. I read all I could find on IEPs and my rights in the schools, and I quickly learned that getting them off was going to be almost impossible. After trying unsuccessfully on my own for months to navigate the education system and change the IEP, I enlisted the help of an advocate who attended a meeting with me, and though I have not yet seen the new IEPs, I believe we now have them back to learning grade level. It would have been helpful to my husband and I to be better informed of what effects a modified curriculum are before the IPRC meeting, so that we would have had time to really think it through. I am not saying that modification is not needed. It is, and maybe it will be in our future. However, it shouldn't be added before we are able to see if accommodations alone are enough. There should be information given to parents explicitly explaining this, and it should have to be signed by everyone involved, so that parents are fully aware and that the school has explained to the parents what this does to a child's learning pathway. When children are diagnosed with learning disabilities, they should be given a reasonable amount of time to see what they can achieve on accommodations alone, certainly more than a few months, to see if they can succeed before modifications are even considered. Children have to be of at least average intelligence to be diagnosed with a learning disability, so we should treat them that way and give them a chance to succeed. After all, many have spent years falling behind and will need time to catch up and show us what they are truly capable of.
Do you two kids want to say anything?
No.
No? Okay.
She pretty much just summed it up for me.
Maybe, Mum, you could tell us a bit about the impact on the kids. It's clearly an emotional, for both the kids and yourself.
Yeah, they did want to talk about it, but it's nerve-wracking. They've both said it's hard to have everyone ahead of you be doing one thing and you're doing something below. It's difficult, it makes you feel stupid. They both will say they know they're not, but it's how you feel. Evan always says, he wishes people, everyone could spend a day in the life being dyslexic, and then you would see and would feel and know what they need for the help.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I will now ask Carrie and Caitlin Helmer to present.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Carrie Helmer, and this is my daughter Caitlin. Caitlin is currently in Grade 11 in the Lampton-Cant district school board. She's taking university-level courses and has achieved honours in every semester in high school. She loves going to school, even though it means that she has to get up at 5:30 in the morning to catch the bus at 6:45. She has an amazing group of friends and great relationships with her teachers. She's thriving. However, this was not always the case. Caitlin's dad and I noticed in kindergarten that she was struggling with reading. She could not remember the sight words from one day to the next and was making no improvement in her reading. We asked the teacher about this and were told not to worry about it. She'd get it, she was still really young. We asked again and again about getting her tested because we knew something just wasn't right. We were told straight out that she was too young to be tested and that there was nothing the resource department at her school could do because of her young age. In Grade 1, it was suggested to us that we could have Caitlin tested privately at our own expense, and so we jumped at that opportunity. The result was that an individual education plan, or an IEP, was developed and put into place for the start of Grade 2, and we thought our problems were solved. However, grades 3 to 5 proved to be more and more frustrating for us all. We got less and less cooperation from teachers, and Caitlin was making little to no progress in her reading ability, and she was falling further and further behind. As her parents, we had no idea to help her. We felt frustrated and let down by the school system. Her dad and I tried to develop relationships with her teachers, going in to meet with them to discuss her needs and her challenges, offering to help with whatever we could so that Caitlin could be successful, but nothing seemed to work. Caitlin tried to learn to read. I have never seen anyone try so hard to do something, and it was heartbreaking for us to watch. Books in the primary grades that would have taken her older sister days to read took Caitlin weeks, and that was with me reading every second or third page out loud to her. And it wasn't just school that was affected by Caitlin's reading difficulties. She couldn't read the names of stores when we went shopping at the mall. She couldn't read street signs, menus at restaurants, or the packages of food in the grocery store. And then, everything changed in Grade 5. At a parent council meeting that I attended, we had a presentation from a representative of a school that specialised in teaching children with learning disabilities, and needless to say, that caught my attention. Caitlin's resource teacher noticed my interest and asked if we'd like to have Caitlin retested. That testing resulted in Grade 5 and her being identified with a severe learning disability in reading and a recommendation to apply to a demonstration school.
Elementary school was incredibly difficult for me. It felt like the other kids in the class were staring at me and making fun of me because I was the kid in class who couldn't read, and that there must be something wrong with me. I felt like the teachers didn't know what to do with me or how to help me, so they just gave me extra time to complete my work, which meant that I often had to stay in class working during recess. I thought that I was stupid. I got passed along from grade to grade with minimal to no help from anyone, minus my parents. In Grade 6, I was given a laptop by the school, but the programmes that were on it did not help me. The programmes read for me, they did not teach me to read, so most of the time, I didn't even use it. I couldn't bring the laptop home so that way I could learn to use it better or use it to finish my homework. By the time I was in Grade 6, I was missing a lot of school because of stomach aches. My grandparents would pick me up at school because I wasn't feeling well, but usually after a short time at their house, I was feeling better. The stomach aches were just a way to get me out of school because I hated it so much. I wasn't like the other kids in my classes. The other kids didn't- The other kids didn't get sent out in the hallway to finish their reading assessments because it was taking too long and the teacher needed to move on. The other kids got help from the teacher when they put their hand up in class. When I did that, the teacher came to me and tried to help me, but I was always still confused. The other kids didn't have to go, asked to go to the bathroom to cry because they were so frustrated. I felt like the teachers were just shoving me from grade to grade because no one knew what to do with me or how to help me. I had no self-confidence at all and thought that it was all my fault, that I must be doing something wrong. And then I got the chance of a lifetime. I was accepted to Amethyst Demonstration School in grade seven. I started grade seven reading at a grade three level. Amethyst is where I finally figured out that I wasn't doing anything wrong and that it was the system that hadn't been working for me and that I wasn't stupid. At Amethyst, I learned to love school. I learned that it was okay to ask for what I needed and tell people what I want. I learned to advocate and stand up for myself. Oh, and I also learned how to read. For the first time in my education career, I learned about phonics. They taught me that letters have sounds and sometimes more than one. They taught me rules like the E on the end of the word is silent and makes the vowel say their name. They taught me how to put sounds together to make words or to decode words as I was reading. If this had been taught to me in grade, in kindergarten or grade one, I likely wouldn't have had such a bad experience in school. I was at Amethyst for two years, and by the time I finished, I was reading at grade level. I can now read menus at restaurants, and when Mom and I go on trips together, I read the street signs faster than she does. I love to read. It is relaxing and a lot of fun. I can keep up with my classmates with very little accommodations, and I can now read really big books in a short amount of times, and I wouldn't even have been able to attempt those books earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and telling us your experience. As you know, the demonstration schools have limited numbers of space. I think we're actually at Amethyst today, but, and I'm sure they'd love to have more students if they could, but not every student in the province can find their way into a demonstration school. How does that make you feel knowing that if a student didn't get, if you didn't get to be here, things might have turned out much different for you?
It makes me very upset and very sad because schools like Amethyst have the capacity to hold so many more kids, but they have a cap on how many kids they can actually have. So I'm really upset that the government won't raise that cap and let more kids come.
Demonstration schools work. Demonstration schools are the specialists at teaching kids to read. That's, that's all that they do, and Katie is living proof of that. She's, could not have been taking the courses that she's taking at high school without having attended a demonstration school. She wouldn't be able to sit here in front of all of these people this evening and on many other occasions in order to tell her story without having learned what she learned at a demonstration school.
Carrie, question for you. It sounds like as early as kindergarten in grade one, you knew something was wrong.
Yes.
And you did try and make efforts to have that addressed.
Yes.
Why do you think that even though you knew something was wrong, nothing was done about it?
The, we were told, when we spoke with her kindergarten teacher, that her age precluded her from working with the resource teacher, that there were, the resource teacher didn't have any skills appropriate for children at that age. We were told that the school system didn't traditionally test children for learning disabilities until they were in grades three or four, and that everything would be okay, that she would just, I don't know, magically absorb the, the ability to read if I just read to her and she learned how to infer from looking at pictures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Jeff and Michelle Bernard and their sons, Brody and John.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting us here. My name is Jeff Bernard. I'm here with my wife, Michelle, our oldest son, John, who's in grade 12, and Brody, who is in grade 10. We live in Kitchener-Warley area, and our kids attend the Warley Region District School Board. Both of our kids have been diagnosed with dyslexia, dysgraphia, dyscalculia by psychologists that we had to pay for out of our own pocket. Luckily, our insurance covered about 75% of this. We had to do this as the school would not provide this service to them, as they were not behavioral kids. Brody's first assessment was done in grade three, and the spec ed teacher and the grade three teacher both did not believe that he had a reading disability, as he could read, even though the assessment was right there in front of him. If we were told that it was dyslexia, then we would have pushed harder for an intervention by the school. Because the school did nothing, we thought that it was just, he was just behind a couple upgrades in reading. To help him read, he was paired up with other kids and accommodations such as more clarification, more time for assignments and tests, being kept in for recess, and was provided a computer to help with his writing. This has changed our son with having social issues, feeling stupid, and having no confidence or self-esteem. In grade five, he told us he wanted to kill himself for being stupid and dumb. No children should ever have to feel this way, especially when something could have been done. In the summer of grade six, we got him assessed again, as the school did nothing with the first assessment, and he was struggling. We went to a different psychologist, as we thought the first one didn't do her job, not realizing, you know, what's the psychologist to, didn't do her job, but it's the actual school that failed our son. We found out that the school board has two secret programs, one for learning disabilities and one for anxiety called the ECO program. The school board did not offer this to us until we pushed for it. He was put into the ECO program due to his anxiety, which did nothing to support his dyslexia. We started to research therapies for our kids with dyslexia, and we found NILD, which is the National Institute for Learning Development. When he started, he was in grade nine with a grade three reading level. In seven months, he went up to a grade six reading level. By the end of this June, we would have paid over $9,600, all out of pocket with one more year to go. With two months of starting this intervention, his confidence has gone up. He has made honors in the second semester of grade nine.
As for our son, John, we always knew he wasn't reading at a grade level. Sorry, I'm dyslexic as well. When we brought our concerns to the teachers, we always heard, "He's a boy. He's a December baby. He will catch up." He never did. From JK to grade three, our concerns were never taken seriously, despite the fact that he still struggled with reading, math, and writing. In grade four, the teacher recommended he get an assessment. However, the school waitlist was years, so we had to pay for it ourselves. John has also been on an IEP since grade three with similar accommodations and computer equipment as Brody. Over the course of his education, we have to fight with the teachers and principals to follow his IEP and learning strategies provided by the psychologist. This has been emotional and mental strain on our own mental health, besides our financial In grade 11, John was told by the education assistant that he no longer needed support. In grade 12, when struggling in English, and we asked where his support went, that is when he told us. Emails went back and forth stating he didn't need it anymore, as if dyslexia goes away. In one email response, we included a name from the Ontario Human Rights Commission, and the education support was returned. To date, we have paid for three assessments for John, the latest being completed this past summer. In it, John is reading at a grade 4.5 and his processing speed is at eight percentile. Based on the latest assessment, the education supports and the school board, teachers and special education teachers have implemented since grade four have all failed. Based on Brody's success and the NILD intervention and the failure of our education system, we have no choice but to put in, put John in the same intervention to be successful, costing us another $15,000 at least. We have fought the school system since John started school. We are exhausted, and none of this should have happened. If we didn't fight the school system, our children would have fallen further behind. Based on our experience and talking with friends and neighbors who are teachers, teachers receive no education on how to teach a child with dyslexia. If Brody can go twice a week at an hour and 20 minutes for each, for seven months, and can go up to, from a grade three level to a grade six, there's no reason why the school system cannot teach our children to read, period.
My name is John, and I am 17 and in grade 12. All through school, I felt like I did not belong. I felt no one would want to talk to me for having a learning disability. Not many people would hang out with me or even talk to me. I always felt I wasn't as smart as others in my class, which led to me having self-doubt and lack of confidence. I felt the school did not want to help me, and they were trying to fail me intentionally. My parents would continuously go to the school and ask for support. I believe schools should teach evidence-based reading, as I am reading at a grade 4.5 level. My two high school music teachers have taught me able, or taught me how to read music, which now I am able to play five different instruments. If the school taught evidence-based reading, I would not be so far behind or feel stupid.
Hello. My name is Brody, and I'm in grade 10. All through school, I felt stupid and lacked the confidence in myself. In grade four, the school did not help me with my dyslexia, even though they had a copy of my assessment. I started to get depressed and had negative thoughts. I also had issues with friends. When I was 10, I wanted to kill myself because I felt too stupid to learn anything. I would hit my head over and over, saying, "I'm stupid, I'm stupid, I'm stupid." Grade six, the teacher helped me, even though she said I was her first dyslexic student, and I would take up most of her time. The teachers were great, and I didn't, the teacher was great, and I didn't need to take the ECO test, as tests were awful for me. When I was taking French, I felt very dumb, and my parents got me exempt, meaning I sat there reading books while the class did French. In grades seven and eight, it was better. I was in a program for anxiety and got me more help. Even though I was getting the help, I didn't, it didn't help me with my reading. The first semester of grade nine, I had lots of anxiety and started my reading intervention after school. The lady I go to for my NILD helps me with my reading, writing, and math. If this was able to me sooner, I would not have all the negative feelings I had. So I feel the school should have the evidence-based reading program able to everyone.
Thank you so much for sharing. John and Brody, I just want to know how your experience has been now with NILD, because your parents were talking about the gains that you were able to make. So how has that impacted your belief in your ability to learn?
So only Brody is in it?
Yeah, I'm only in it. He's, he's not in it.
Okay, so talk about it.
So, okay, yeah, thanks. So it helps me with reading, so the person starts at the basics, so like, silent E, open consonants, or no, sorry, open vowels and all that stuff.
Closed vowels.
Yeah, closed vowels. Yeah, how about you talk about it now? My confidence has gone up a lot.
And since starting it, what did you make?
Oh, honors are all. Yeah.
You all talked about not only the emotional strain, but the financial strain that this has had on your family, and it's not, there's no end in sight. Can you tell us what you think would have happened if you didn't have the resources to pay for the NILD program?
They wouldn't be where they're at today without us getting them involved more. We probably would have done something to get the money. Lena and family and parents and all that to get the money, yet you have to do it. You can't sit back. The biggest thing is, people with autism, that is their own problem, and I feel sorry for them, but they get money. A reading disability, no matter what type it is, dyslexia, dysgraphia, it doesn't get any funding. I'd love to have the money that an autism family would get. That would go a long way in solving this.
Thank you. Thanks so much, boys, for coming too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now call upon Danielle and Darcy Wybinski.
My name is Danielle. I'm a mother of three children, two diagnosed with dyslexia or a learning disability. I'm also a special education teacher, and this year, I'm seconded to our government, one of Ontario's demonstration schools for children with learning disabilities. This is my eldest son, Darcy, and he will speak to his own experiences in struggling to learn to read. I will first speak as a parent, and specifically, my journey with Darcy. I will say, as a teacher, I have more knowledge than others on how to navigate the school system, and that even my journey was far from smooth. Darcy had a happy, uneventful kindergarten experience. He enjoyed Lego and dinosaurs much more than he enjoyed literacy-based activities, but we in the school put that down to age. No red flags were raised, and no early screening tests were administered. For grade one, he attended French immersion. On many occasions, we did express our concern that he wasn't progressing in reading, but we were told not to worry. It's probably because he's in French. Even when a problem was acknowledged, there was no support offered by the teacher or school support staff. At this point, we paid for a speech and language pathologist to work with Darcy at home. She felt he had severe dyslexia. That knocked me for six. I was not expecting that statement, but it did set the wheels in motion. We made the decision to return Darcy to full English, and that summer paid for private psychoeducational testing, knowing that with his age and with the extensive waiting list, waiting on the school board to test Darcy will be wasting years. Thankfully, we were in a position to make this choice. The results were, Darcy met criteria for a diagnosis of a learning disability. Even as a teacher, I find the whole experience overwhelming. I asked if he had dyslexia and was told, "This is not a term used here." So I took a book from my bag, overcoming dyslexia, and asked, "Well, should I keep reading this? Is it pertinent for Darcy?" He smiled and said he would strongly recommend I keep reading. In the few months of grade two, Darcy was not making any progress in reading. We expressed our concern to the classroom teacher and informed him that we were going to proceed with IPRC, Identification, Placement, and Review Committee, and IEP creation. She asked, "Why?" She explained that the policy for this, was the special education teacher would support the primary classroom teacher, who in turn would support the child, and that was already happening, yet obvious to us not working. So we went ahead with the IPRC and demanded an IEP be implemented that explicitly stated he would be withdrawn for reading instruction. But all that was offered at his school was LLI, or Level of Literacy. He continued to make very little progress. We knew he needed evidence-based systematic instruction in reading, so we wrote a letter to the superintendent of Special Education Services in which we asked, "What can be put in place to teach our son to read?" The board's objectives seemed in line with a tiered response to intervention outlined in Learning for All, yet there was no Tier Three offered at my son's school. So what was the next step? We also asked to have the Empower Reading Program. The response was, "Due to low population numbers and the school location, Empower would not be offered to him." They offered a program called GAIN. Unfortunately, Darcy's reading still did not improve. So after school, Darcy began to attend the LD Association in Burlington for two hours a week for Orton and Gillingham tutoring. He also received extensive support at home. In grade three, we wrote another letter to express our frustrations and disappointment that Darcy was not provided with an effective reading program due to geographical location of his school. We outlined they had worked with staff and programs offered by the school for the last three years and now had exhausted all options. three years and now had exhausted all options. The turning point came when the principal had a discussion with us about how Darcy had been reduced to tiers of a reading. We were outraged that Empower was offered in his board, but not to him. We felt it was a violation of Darcy's rights and the fact they had not been taught to read was contravening the Education Act. This time, the response was swift. We had a very harsh and emotional meeting with school board and school staff. I was reduced to tears as a consultant said, "Well, having Empower doesn't mean Darcy will learn to read. It will not necessarily fix him." All I could do was sob and say we were broken. Working so much at home and privately, we could not go on doing it alone. We needed more support from the school system. That September, Darcy would have Empower. He was in grade four. We were grateful. However, we had now missed the boat in early intervention. The other students in grade four were reading to learn while Darcy was still learning to read. The whole process up to today has really taken a huge emotional, mental, and financial toll on myself and our family. Darcy has made it to grade seven. He seems relatively unscathed. He's confident, athletic, and opinionated, and he still finds reading a struggle and very cognitively taxing. He's a functional reader. He can read his textbooks, short texts, and things needed for everyday life, and he does use his technology, a whole other fight, to do the rest. I do want to highlight that being teachers meant we knew the system and it was still an uphill battle. With private tutoring, monetary expense, and emotional turmoil, this is how Darcy found success. I was teaching through all this and mostly taught a special education class, if you can believe it. I have my specialist in special education, yet was still not equipped to teach the children in front of me to read. Having my own children with dyslexia made me truly understand how ill-equipped I was. However, I have to say that most of Darcy's teachers and my colleagues truly, really want to help and care deeply about their students, but we are stretched thin, we are not supported, and we are not trained effectively. As a parent, I campaigned for a few years for my child to be taught using a direct instruction, research-based reading program. It took many more years as a teacher to get trained and I had a wonderful principal who supported me both financially and advocated vocally. In a regular school, teaching power is amazing, but there are hard decisions for who to select, and there is a tiny aspect, one or a day for six students is highly effective, but it isn't always viable with the shortage of staff. Overall, I feel I've not really been thrilled when I left to teach students to read with a learning disability. I continue every day to learn, change my practices, and work with families to ensure students learn to read. Currently, I teach at a demonstration school. I see those students who have fallen through the cracks, some in grade 10, 11, and 12, who cannot read, and now it's intertwined with their self-esteem and their self-worth. I see how many different boards operate and yet somehow a group of students continue to fail to learn to read. Through my experience, I can say, dyslexia is a gift if you have money and if you have parents who know that trusting the education system is not enough. Success means private tutoring, assiduous, consistent hard work at home, and continuous monitoring, communicating, meeting with demanding, and only checking on school practices.
Hello, my name is Darcy. I am in grade seven. I love history and science and all sports, especially lacrosse and hockey. I also have dyslexia. I don't really remember learning to read at school. I know I found it difficult to rhyme. I had a hard time learning letter sounds. I couldn't move sounds. For example, say the word stop with a S sound. Can you do it? I couldn't. I couldn't remember sight words. I still read very slowly and sometimes my brain knows what I want to say, but the wrong word comes out of my mouth. I know that dyslexia never goes away, but there are some things people can do to overcome their problems. I just wish I'd been taught earlier. Maybe I'd be a better reader now. To learn to read, I had to do lots and lots and lots of work at home. Here are some of the seriously boring things that I had to do. Go figure, they're working. I learned sight words by connecting them with pictures. I learned letter sounds by connecting them with pictures and stories. For example, ER is a cowboy and its horse. It says, "errrr." I had to do strange exercise called Brain Gym. I had words all over my kitchen wall and my grandma said it looked like a school. I had to go to a tutor in Burlington for two hours a week. I read and didn't Empower at school. I read every day at home. Having both your parents as teachers can be a frustrating thing. Dyslexia means I have to work extra hard and it is annoying when I know I can do it, but my brain will not cooperate. However, I have other skills and talents to overcome dyslexia. My parents say it makes me hardworking and resilient. I guess we'll see.
My question is, I think a lot of people, including myself, are surprised to hear that you're a special education teacher and don't feel you have the skills to teach children with dyslexia. Why do you think, like, what is it about the teacher training that's missing for somebody like you to be able to teach a child with dyslexia?
I actually have an interesting story. I trained, obviously, in a different country and I taught in London, England, and I taught for many boards in Ontario. And through most of those times, the balance literacy was the focus, certainly in Canada.
And what's, sorry, just for others?
Yeah, they had like four aspects. So we had word study, we had guided reading, we had shared reading, but it was sitting with the child and reading with him. It wasn't phonics-based. I had some training in England based on phonics, but when I went to Empower training, I was surprised how much I learnt. Things, rules that I, I am not dyslexic, so I don't remember learning to read and it came very natural to me and I think quite a few teachers are similar to that. So at some point, we never really thought, I never thought of mechanics until I had a child with dyslexia and then I had to break it down. And when I broke it down, he still didn't get it. So Empower, it just happens to be the one training that was offered at my school board and that taught me as a teacher to break it down even more. And rules that I didn't need and rules that most of the children in my classroom don't need, they can remember it just by practice, these children do need.
Thank you.
Given your unique perspective as both a teacher and the parent of a dyslexic child, what do you think the system could do better to meet the needs of children with reading disabilities?
Money and people. We don't have enough people. I do work in a demonstration right now, so obviously our ratios are fantastic. At the minute, I teach Empower Reading to five students and I can obviously have them for one hour a day. And what I can do with five students for one hour for a year, success comes naturally because I have the time to sit with them. What I meant by my comment in my speech about Empower being amazing in a regular classroom is true, but when I have a school of 400 children and I have to pick only six, and then when I have those six, I am supposed to do an hour a day, but who do I neglect to give that hour to? Those decisions are heartbreaking and not always viable because I have to then support other children in that school. So, and I think that's what, when I went to get Darcy's support, they said no initially because it wasn't viable to have an Empower teacher in a school his size because she wasn't, it was too expensive for that person to do it until a parent became an advocate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will now invite Dr. Sharon Bury to present.
Human Rights Chief Commissioner, the members of the Right to Read Inquiry Team, members of the public, parents, children, adults, youth, thank you for this opportunity to speak to the Ontario Human Rights Commission and this very important Right to Read Inquiry. My name is Sharon Bury and I am a behavioural paediatrician. I've been practising in Windsor, Ontario for over 25 years. By way of background, I attended Western University in London, where I received my Bachelor of Science Biology. I did my medical school at Dalhousie and finished my paediatrics in Halifax. And I also have some physician leadership training. I'm also privileged to be serving as the President of the Pediatricians' Alliance of Ontario, which is the Ontario chapter of the American Academy of Paediatrics. Ontario has about half of Canada's 3,000 paediatricians. I love what I do. I feel like I was in my office right here. Thank you for sharing your life with me and your stories with us tonight. I truly believe that the children I see can and will change the world for the better if given the chance. Children and adolescents today have experienced the most rapid changes in the use and exposure to technology since the beginning of our civilization. Now more than ever, the knowledge worker has to be able to learn and adapt rapidly to the changes in the economy. And this is why, as a society, we have to ensure that children are equipped with the reading and language skills necessary to be successful in this economy. I assess children with emotional and behavioural difficulties on a daily basis. Through this work, I'm on the front lines of caring for children with learning disorders and its emotional and behavioural consequences we've heard tonight. I and other paediatricians, I'm in the unique position of seeing how the various school boards and schools deal with children with learning disorders and specifically reading disabilities. From reviewing various psychological evaluation reports, individual education plans, monitoring the child's progress over many years from kindergarten to elementary school to high school, graduation or the lack thereof, and the unique position of seeing, as we have heard tonight, the development of anxiety, school avoidance, depression, suicidal ideation, and in some cases, substance use disorder in some of my patients. At the outset, however, I must state the high regard in which I hold the teaching profession. I acknowledge the hard work and demanding work of being a teacher. I acknowledge the complexities of providing an environment where children are calm and ready to learn. So let me share some of my firsthand experiences. Several years ago, when I was involved in inpatient child psychiatry, a young patient under the age of 10 was admitted because of an attempted suicide. The child had developed school refusal and was so worried about going to school that on the way to school, the child attempted to jump out of the car on a busy express highway. We contacted the school to obtain the school reports and spoke with the school psychologist. Sometime later, the child was discharged and within a few weeks, a psychological assessment showed a severe learning disorder. Children with reading disabilities, as we have heard tonight, can present with school avoidance, behaviour, and attention problems. It's very difficult to get out of bed and ready for school in the mornings. Parents are often late for work or miss work because of this. They have multiple body complaints, which are symptoms of anxiety. They have poor sleep at night, they're worried about school the next day, and are tired throughout the school day. Often, as we have heard here again, parents are given names of psychologists in the community because they are told no interventions can be put in place until they have a formal individual education plans. And of course, they are also told at the school that the waiting list is so long, it's two years to get an assessment and the financial repercussions of that. Parents show a range of emotions, which we have seen here, anger, frustration, anxiety, and they often cry in the office as well. How are they going to afford the expense of a psychological evaluation? So as President of the PAO, I speak on behalf of Ontario's 1,400 paediatricians. This is one of our top five priorities, literacy. And we want to advocate as all of you for evidence-based reading programs to be administered in all of Ontario's schools. We know that early adversity, poverty, and the social influences of health play a major role in learning and development and health outcomes. The most disadvantaged families can't afford to pay privately for testing or tutoring. The Right to Read Inquiry is therefore one of the essential components necessary to bring about health and education equity and an equitable society. When children suffer, families suffer, and the society suffers. We recommend mandatory early testing for reading disabilities and early evidence-based reading interventions. We know that words become worlds and that when children and adults can read fluently and comprehend what they read, they are more likely to be productive and healthy individually and make communities and societies stronger and more resilient. Children are our future. Thank you for your attention and I'm open to answering any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bury. I think you bring a really unique perspective. I was certainly surprised to hear that literacy is one of the top five goals for the Pediatric Association. What is the research that sort of links literacy and health?
Well, you've alluded to that in your opening remarks, Chief Commissioner, that when a child doesn't know how to read, we have heard of the emotional impacts, not only on the child, but on the family, and also the compelling story that I just shared with you, suicidal ideation and even attempts that children have had. And we know that literacy is associated with poor health outcomes, not just emotional, but other physical health outcomes, health literacy, and economic outcomes. So if you don't graduate from high school, then you're not going to do well economically and it's not good for the society. And so, because paediatrics has advocacy in the DNA and we understand that the connections in the society are systemic and not just inside the office, we are really, we actually surveyed our paediatricians and this is a really top priority for us.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if you can tell us what you think some of the systemic barriers are to teaching and having an evidence-based approach to teaching reading and supporting students with reading disabilities and how do we overcome those barriers?
Where should I start? Well, I've been practising for over 25 years and I'm in Windsor, Essex, and this is all I do now. I was in the hospital in inpatient child psychiatry. I am a general paediatrician by training. But the problem with children's health in general is that it's really divided into multiple ministries. And so when you have too many cooks, well, you know what the answer is, we spoil the broth. And we've been doing it for many years in terms of not communicating so with education, with health, with community and social services. So that is one of the systemic barriers. And we've actually called for our national organisations, a sort of children's advocate for the whole of Canada, really, to make sure that the needs of children are being met in a systemic way. The other barrier, of course, many of you alluded to, was the training of teachers. And as you know, in fact, my daughter is a teacher and my mom was a teacher. So I really recognise the role of teachers and the lack of training and I would say that teachers want to be trained. The next issue, of course, is funding. Who is going to pay for this? But it's solvable. I heard many of you speak of the Empower Programme, which is a real systematic and excellent reading programme, which was actually researched at the hospital for sick kids. So it is an Ontario programme. There's a way we should be able to pay for it so that we could have it in our schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor, for your perspective and for your forthrightness. Our next presenters will be Ronaldo Hernandez, Amanda Jib, and Ferran Hernandez Lin. And after they present, we will take a 15-minute break.
My name is Ronaldo Hernandez. I am accompanied by my son, Ferran, and my partner, Amanda Jib. We would like to thank the Ontario Human Rights Commission for this opportunity to speak about Ferran's experience as a student with dyslexia. I've asked my partner to share the details of our experience, but I just want to provide some context. I came to Canada as a refugee. I came to Canada as a refugee from El Salvador in 1991. During the civil war, my family survived torture, massacres, and daily bombardments by the Salvadoran Armed Forces. Eventually, we fled to a refugee camp in Honduras, where I spent 10 years of my childhood. The conditions there were very bad. Many children died. I did not have an opportunity to receive a formal education. When my son was born in 2006, I was very happy that he would attend school in Canada, where education is a human right. I did not think I would have to fight so hard for these rights to be realized. When I was in El Salvador, in the midst of the war, I always knew who the enemy was. Dealing with the Toronto District School Board, I failed myself in the midst of another war, but one that was undeclared. When I attended meetings and looked around the table at the teachers and administrators, I didn't see the enemy. The violence was structural, not personal.
Ferran's story begins at a large school in the Toronto District School Board, where he was a racialized and low-income child in a predominantly white and wealthy neighborhood. Ferran was a struggling early reader, and the school first placed him on an Individual Education Plan, or IEP, in October of grade two. In January of grade two, Ferran was moved into a half-day segregated special education class that included a mix of children with many different kinds of learning profiles from many different grades, including English language learners, children with developmental disabilities like Down Syndrome, children with autism, children with ADHD, and children like Ferran with learning disabilities. Notably, nearly all the children in this segregated class were also from racialized and lower-income families. The teacher responsible for the class had only Level 1 Special Education training, and the school did not have any kind of formal reading recovery program in place. Instead, they told Ronaldo that he should hire a private tutor, which was something he could not afford. Ronaldo asked repeatedly for the school to put Ferran on the waiting list to be tested for learning disabilities. School administrators told Ronaldo that he just didn't understand the system. We recognize here, in retrospect, a kind of cultural dissonance. Ronaldo comes from a culture where the most important issues are discussed orally, face-to-face, as a sign of respect. The school administrators, on the other hand, didn't take these kinds of oral inquiries seriously. When I met Ronaldo, Ferran was in grade three. I encouraged Ronaldo to put the requests for psychological testing in writing and to seek out the assistance of an education advocate. Finally, the school began to respond. They agreed to have a meeting to informally review Ferran's situation, but not until the beginning of grade four. Ferran was tested finally in June of grade four, and the results showed what we already knew: that Ferran is highly intelligent. His crystallized intelligence is in the 94th percentile, and that he has dyslexia. The psychologist emphasized that he could thrive academically with appropriate interventions, accommodations, and the use of assistive technology. Even after the psychologist's assessment, the school administration recommended placing him back into the segregated special education class for another year. But based on outside expert advice, we insisted that he be moved into the regular grade-five class with appropriate supports and reading recovery interventions. In the end, Ronaldo had to pay for an online reading recovery program himself, and it's through this program that Ferran first learned to read. We repeatedly requested a meeting with an Identification, Placement, and Review Committee, or IPRC, to formalize Ferran's exceptionality and discuss his placement. But the school did not organize the first IPRC meeting until June of grade five, a full year after his psychological testing and almost four years after they had first placed him on an IEP. Ferran's assistive technology equipment request was not processed until midway through grade six. You can imagine how Ferran's self-esteem suffered through these unconscionable delays and the toll that it took on Ronaldo as a parent. In the summer before grade six, we made a formal complaint to the Toronto school superintendent responsible for the school in question. He promised us that Ferran would take part in a pilot implementation of the Empower Reading Recovery Program at his school. Ferran started the program in late October of grade six, but it was abruptly canceled in February when the only teacher trained to implement the program went on a medical leave. This was the last straw. Ronaldo decided that if Ferran was going to learn to read, they would have to leave Toronto. In the summer before grade seven, they moved to an apartment in my neighborhood, here in London, where Ferran could attend the same small school as my daughter's. It was very hard for Ferran and Ronaldo to leave their friends and to leave their community in Toronto, but in the end, it was the right decision. Ferran's assistive technology claim was processed in a couple of weeks. We met with the school psychologist within the first month, and the school provided Ferran with a reading recovery plan and subscription to the Lexia program, which he continues to use. In just 16 months, Ferran's reading level has gone up four grade levels, and he is now thriving as a grade-eight student. We just want to conclude by sharing three observations with the commission. The first is that the failure of the Toronto District School Board to provide timely assessments, appropriate interventions, and access to assistive technology was a violation of Ferran's rights under the Ontario Human Rights Code, and surely, he's not alone. Second, as Ronaldo stated at the beginning, the problem here is fundamentally one of structural, bureaucratic, and systemic violence. Although we feel that Ronaldo and Ferran were victims of discrimination, there's no single person to blame. The system must be radically overhauled so that every child with a learning disability, no matter where they live, has equal access to the Ontario curriculum, and so that no other racialized, low-income child is put into a segregated class without proper assessment, effectively ghettoizing them within the walls of their own school. And thirdly, we urge the commission to use an intersectional analysis when interpreting the results of the Right-to-Read Inquiry. In Ferran's case, his learning disability was compounded by other factors, including race and ethnicity, economic class, and Ronaldo's subject position as a single parent, a person of mixed indigenous heritage from a predominantly oral culture, and a refugee who came to Canada without any formal education. Finally, to all the other children and parents out there who have had similar experiences in schools across Ontario, the three of us want to say that we stand in solidarity with you. You are not alone.
So Ferran, I know you didn't speak formally, but I wanted to ask you, how has your journey impacted you? How did you feel when you were younger and you didn't have the supports versus now being in London and having more supports in place?
I mean, when I, like, from the beginning, I knew that I wasn't like the other kids. I just didn't know why. Like, I thought I was just stupid, dumb. Like, I remember in like grade three or something, seeing this one girl read this thick book, like, that thick, and going through it, just flipping through the pages. And I was like, I can't even read like the smallest books. And like, I don't know, I just felt different from everyone else and the program that I was put into, like, the different room. Yeah. Like, at the time, I was too really young to know, it's like, oh, this isn't actually helping me. Because at the time, it was just like, oh, I don't get to do work because we really didn't do anything in that class. It was more just like hanging out. So we sort of just relaxed in there. And then I fell further and further behind in my reading level, so, but yeah.
And what about since moving to London?
It's definitely better than Toronto. Like, the education, like, the Thames Valley District School Board has helped a lot more than the Toronto District School Board has, but yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking about intersectionality. That is very important to us. Any one of you wants to answer this? That would be great. Do you think the school or the administration were attentive to the intersectional barriers that you faced?
You want me to answer this? Okay. I mean, from my observation, I came in, when Ferran was in grade three, I think, no. Ronaldo comes from an oral culture. They did not take his oral requests seriously, so there's one example. I think they repeatedly told him that he needed to hire a private tutor for Ferran, preferably for three or four days a week, if he was going to catch up. And when I met Ronaldo, he was feeling like tremendously, almost paralyzed with guilt because it was not something that he could afford as a single parent on a low income, especially at Toronto rates. He did his best. There were many friends who came and helped, but it's not the same as having a professionally-trained tutor. Many of us read with Ferran. But what he really needed was that reading intervention program. And I think that the parents, predominantly wealthy parents in that district, simply used outside services in order to catch their kids up. There are, you know, many kids who had reading disabilities at that school, but only a few of them who couldn't afford the private support. At one point, they did suggest that Ronaldo try to scrape together the money to send Ferran to a private school, where the tuition was actually more than his yearly income.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you to our speakers thus far. And we have a few more speakers to present, and then we have the open mic session. This time, I'm going to ask that you take, we take a break. If you can be back by 7:30, please, just to keep the matter moving. It'll be good. Thank you. So as we settle, I will actually invite our next speakers, who are at the table: Angela Ramsey and Peter Ma.
Thank you. We're here on behalf of our son Logan, who's 11 years old. And he's a part of the Waterloo Region District School Board. And it was very clear from junior kindergarten that there was something wrong with his word comprehension abilities in regards to reading. He received very little support through the school, whose only response to his struggles was to continually express concern of his difficulties and lower his grade expectations. This was difficult, knowing he was an intelligent child who is experiencing difficulties only in his ability to read. I tried to teach him to read every night at home using alternate methods to what was being used at school, but trying to comprehend two different styles of reading only confused him further. Reading felt like a kind of magic to him. He felt all the other students knew a secret or trick to understanding that he lacked. He would come home from school crying every night, asking us what was wrong with him. His teachers were sending an endless stream of books home that they knew he couldn't read, which only added to his despair. We tried unsuccessfully to support him at home and watched him struggle for four years. As he was finishing grade two through networking, we found out about the psychological educational assessment and how he would have to have one in order to receive the support he needed. When we asked at the school, we were told that to get one through the school would take years. We knew that early intervention is essential, and we felt time slipping by. With every year that passed, we knew that his future was being impacted in a profound way. Though we couldn't afford it, we paid to have him assessed when he was eight years old and going into grade three. This assessment confirmed what we, as parents, already knew: that he had a specific learning disorder with impairments in reading and writing, or as he likes to refer to it, dyslexia. Evaluation in hand, we were excited because now he was going to get the support that he needed, and we felt like our fight was over. As time progressed, we came to discover that this was not, in fact, reality. There are programs that have been proven to help children with dyslexia. The Waterloo District School Board lists them as a service that they provide. When I asked why my son wasn't in these programs, they told me that the school didn't have anyone trained in them, so they weren't available to him. I wrote to the superintendent in charge of special education services three times and received no reply as to why they would claim that these programs were available when clearly they were not. In my son's assessment, it was stated that he would need his own Chromebook with training provided. We found out far too late that he was only borrowing a classroom Chromebook, and the person providing training was a nine-year-old student in the grade above him. He finally expressed to us his frustration of going to use it just to find out that someone was always changing the settings, so he was unable to understand it. Exceedingly frustrated and getting nowhere except continually reduce grade expectations, we were ready to pull him from the school. We were desperate. We didn't know where to go, but we felt our only options were to homeschool, which we couldn't afford, or to try to find a different school for him. Throughout all these years, I made continuous, repeated attempts to have a meeting with the resource teacher that were repeatedly rebuffed. He absolutely refused to meet with me. On every educational plan that was sent home, where it asked if the parent was consulted in the development, I always wrote "not to my satisfaction." I added comments and suggestions that had been a part of his assessment that had not been addressed, that went ignored. I wrote to him that the educational plan sent home seemed very generic. I expressed concern that after my son's assessment, his educational plan didn't change, and his diagnosis was never added. When I pressed the issue, I was told that's not how they do things, and that my parental involvement was limited to a form letter that's sent home at the beginning of the year, and that they know what they're doing. He was in his sixth year of his schooling career. Six years of him being emotionally and academically devastated. He was seen a child psychologist as a direct result of being sent into an environment where daily he experienced continuous failure and deep feelings of inadequacy. Six years of them knowing he was struggling, finding out exactly why, and he was still unable to read two- or three-letter words, tell you the sounds that letters made, or properly name the letters of the alphabet. And despite the results of his assessment, the school had still not officially identified him as a special needs student or enrolled him in a corrective reading program. We carried a feeling of complete and utter helplessness, made it all the more difficult because we knew that there were solutions, we just couldn't access them. I wrote a letter to the principal expressing my deepest pleasure at their clear inability to provide support for him. We sat down with the principal and the resource teacher, where it became quite clear that while the resource teacher had read the synopsis of my son's assessment, he had failed to read the finer points of it and had no clear idea of his diagnosis, specific areas of difficulty, or his areas of strength. Having spent approximately $4,000 on an assessment, this was incredibly frustrating to discover. After this meeting, things finally improved with his technology, but not with his reading support. We discovered through extensive networking that there was a specialized classroom at a different school for grades five and six. The school applied for him to be part of this program. This classroom only has 12 students in it for a split five-six classroom for the entire district, which is incredibly inadequate to meet the demand. Luckily, my son was accepted into the program, and it's been wonderful for him. But at 11 years of age, he fears for his future. While he's greatly improved, he is still unable to read a recipe, a menu at a restaurant, or signs on the street. He can't play games that involve reading and needs help typing in a Google search and reading the results. He has expressed his fear of going into grade seven and not having the support he knows he needs to succeed. He's always asking me what he can be when he grows up if he can't read. How is he going to be able to cope through middle and high school? He's intelligent and a good student. He's committed to doing well at school, but he knows how much harder he has to work, and he has experienced how easy it is to fail. We should not allow all these bright, creative kids to fall through the cracks and not live up to their amazing potential. Parents need clear and transparent access to support. We shouldn't have to hunt and fight for it only to find out that the supports that the ministry and school boards claim to have in place don't actually exist. The dyslexic mind is amazing. It can be a gift, not the curse that my son feels it is.
Thank you. So your son's headed into grade seven and leaving the specialized program that he's been in for five-six. What is the plan? What is the plan for next year, and has the board helped you to develop a plan that you have confidence in?
There is the potential of him going into Special Seven-Eight class, which we didn't realize existed either. But it's, the competition to get into that one is very difficult, too. Very small classrooms, very limited space. So we would love for him to be part of that program, and he wants to be part of that program, because as I said, he's really scared of going into a mainstream classroom. But we won't find out if he'll be making it in there.
So how do they decide who gets to go into, like, how do they allot the spaces? As far as you know?
They look at...
I'm not sure we know.
Not sure we know.
We've been told there's no guarantee, even if they're in this program, so...
Yeah, they look at their assessments, which in that respect, I'm glad we got a private one, because it was very well done. He has to be a good student, he has to be performing well, he has to be using his technology, things like that, all be a factor.
So you talked about doing extensive research and networking to try to get Logan the supports that he needed, including the specialized class. I'm just wondering, can you give any advice to other parents that are trying to get those supports as well?
It's hard. I talked to different child psychologists. It was very back alley, people telling me they, I couldn't use their name, telling me that, you know, that it, what, you're meeting people in parking lots, talking to teachers, who said, you know, "I'll meet you out in the parking lot later," and telling me about the educational plan.
It wasn't something that our, like, special ed teacher even told us about.
No.
It was only like, sort of a last-ditch effort, and it finally got, sort of admitted that it was there.
Why do you think it was such a big secret?
Don't know.
I think because of the limited availability to it. I think because it's not offered to too many kids, that they try to keep it a secret is the only thing I can imagine.
Thank you so much.
So the comment is that it's a year-long process to fill out the application for the program those mentioned. Thank you. Our next speaker is Melanie Chenney.
Hello, my name is Melanie Chenney, and I'm a teacher at the Thames Valley District School Board. I would like to start by reading a letter sccribed for a fourth-grade student. "If you believe in yourself, it is easy to believe in your dreams. I believe in myself. My dream is to become a teacher, and I believe I can have my dream if I work hard and get good grades on my report cards. This dream is not going to be easy, because I can't read that good, and I have trouble writing. But I want to be a teacher so I can help other kids with dyslexia like me. If I am read a test, I do better on it. So when I become a teacher, I will read the tests out loud to help the kids get good report cards." This letter was written in 1998 and was mine. This letter was written just a year after my diagnosis of sequential dyslexia, which is a spatial learning disability. Even as a fourth-grade student, I knew something more had to be done for students like me. I still feel that way. However, I understand now that this issue is far more complicated than I thought as a child. But before I get ahead of myself, let me give you a little bit more perspective on my experience. I was a student in the Thames Valley District School Board in the 90s and early 2000s. Over the years, I have been diagnosed with several disabilities, and I will do my best to keep my focus on my learning disability. But I cannot deny that my other disabilities have not had their impact on my education as well. In Grade Three, my mom had to take me outside the school system to get a proper diagnosis of sequential dyslexia. My learning disability was very severe. I was at a Grade One reading level going into Grade Seven, and at the time, my spelling level was not even calculable, it was so low. My teachers' NEAs were amazing, trying every strategy they could think of to help me. They used every resource they had available to them. They even managed to secure me a personal computer with assistive technology by Grade Five. I would like to remind you that this was the 90s, and I had a computer in the classroom before most of my teachers did. Of course, none of us knew how to use the new-fangled technology properly, but we managed. My mother also worked hard to give me the supports I needed by doing everything she could. She was my biggest advocate and taught me to never give up and never surrender. The struggle seemed endless, and only tiny gains were made despite the enormous effort. Until Grade Seven, that was when, that was probably the most influential year of my life, because that was the year I was enrolled here. In the two short years here, I gained so much. I went from a Grade One reading level to a Grade Eight reading level. My comprehension level was that of a Grade Ten, and I gained the advocacy skills and the technology skills I would need to be successful in life. I would like to make it very clear: Amethyst did not cure my learning disability. They gave me the strategies to make my learning disability manageable. I am still painfully aware that my brain is wired differently, and that every word I read and every word I write takes enormous effort. That being said, I know for a fact I would not be here today without Amethyst. High school was a struggle. As one of the only students in my school with assistive technology, which at the time was a laptop, I constantly had to educate my peers and my teachers on what it was. My teachers in high school listened to me and agreed to all my accommodations, which included use of my laptop in every subject, as well as double time on tests. In the end, I managed to graduate at the top of my class, which is quite a feat for someone who was once told she would never survive high school. I went on to gain two bachelor's degrees, one of which was in education. I have worked as a special needs camp counselor for five years, working with kids with LD, ADHD, and Asperger's. And I have also been an assistive technology consultant at the Thames Valley District School Board, working one-on-one with students. I am now on the other side of the desk. I am now the teacher who is struggling to help her kids who are just like her. In my opinion, the things that need to be done to help students would be having smaller class sizes and more EAs. It is very hard to tailor educational approaches to 20 to 30 students, all with different needs. This is particularly true in primary, when early detection and intervention are key. One-on-one time with students is a must for these grades. I'd also like to see more specialized programming. I know that many students who could benefit from a program like Amethyst that never get the opportunity because so few students are let in. We need more programs like this. Other programs, which I have seen that appear to be effective, are the Empowered Program and the Accelerated Program. Both only take a handful of students a year. These programs should be more available to students in need. We also need to remove the stigma associated with taking a kid from a regular classroom setting to get them the help they need, because it is seen as segregation. While it is not ideal, oftentimes equality does not mean we get the same things. It means we get the things that we need, and some kids need it. I certainly did. We need better training for teachers and access to experts. While I think improvements can be made to what teachers are taught, I would like to also point out that it is impossible for teachers to be experts on every type of disability that a child may have. There are hundreds of things, including different disabilities, that can affect a child's ability to read, and it is impossible for us to be experts on all of them. What we need is a baseline practical education, as well as clear steps on who to contact or what to do when we inevitably reach the end of our knowledge, so we can help that individual student. We also need more education for students and their parents. Students need to be educated on their own disabilities and how their brains work. The focus through my entire educational career was on my ability to learn to read. But I learned much later in life that my disability was impacting other areas, and if I had been told this as a child, it could have greatly impacted the ability to understand and manage my disabilities more effectively. We need to look at the whole child and not just one aspect. I hope that my lifetime of experience can be of some help to others with learning disabilities. After all, that is why I became a teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. We've been talking a little bit about the science of reading, and that's all about teaching kids to read using methods that have been scientifically proven to work. When you were getting your Bachelor of Education, did you get any training on what those methods are, or what are the most effective ways to teach children how to read?
They talked about it, but we need to remember that every child is different. So there's been a lot of talk about phonemic awareness through some of the parents. I had great phonemic awareness as a child. Mine is a spatial learning disability. So for example, words on the pages moved for me. So, well, I could sound out words, I couldn't see them properly. I can't tell you the number of times people said, "Hold up your hands, which one's an L?" And I would look at them and go, "They're both L's." So we need to understand that the educational approach, yes, it does need to be improved, and we need to have those in place. We need to understand that one approach is never going to work for every child.
You've probably heard a lot of the parents talk about not knowing how to navigate the system and that being a huge barrier. As a teacher, are you oriented or given information about how to support parents to navigate the system when they come to you with concerns?
Most teachers don't know how to navigate the system properly. I can't tell you the number of times I've talked to coworkers about Amethyst, my experience, and they look at me and say, "What's Amethyst?" And we live fairly close to here. I am very open and honest with my coworkers, my students, and parents on my experience. I never hide that from any of them. So I'm hoping that with my experience, I can help that as well. But it'd be nice to have those in place, so teachers, like I said, so teachers know where to get that information, and that way, it's also available to parents as well.
Our final speaker for this session is Leanne Peters.
My name is Mike, and this is my wife, Leanne. We live in a small town called Kerwood on a farm. It's between London and Sarnia. Matthew attends in a London District School Board. So I guess Matthew's very lucky to have a teacher as a mother, so she pretty much heads this up, so...
Like you said, my name's Leanne Peters, and we're here to talk about Matthew. But first of all, I am an elementary school teacher, and I also have my diploma in ECE, and I have a passion for teaching kindergarten. Matthew just turned nine last week, and he's super creative. He loves building, especially with Lego or in the wood, our wood shop. Sorry, I'm really nervous. He loves helping on the farm, to play hockey and playing outside with his cousins and his neighbors. From kindergarten to Grade Two, Matthew had gone through school feeling pretty confident and enjoying being with his friends. But when Grade Two came, Matthew was in a split two-three class, and was suddenly very aware of his lower reading abilities compared to his peers. He began acting out, refusing to participate in most schoolwork, and getting in trouble at recess. He was becoming the class clown, and every night when we had asked him to read with us, he was having meltdowns and began calling himself stupid and dumb. As a mother, it breaks your heart to hear your child talk like that about themselves. So we knew we needed to get him help fast, and before he spiraled down that path. We did have a speech and language assessment through the school, which happened pretty quickly. And I do want to say, throughout this, his teachers have been amazing. They've done what they can, what they could, and what they know, and they want to help. Through the speech and language assessment, we decided that a psychoeducational assessment would be the next step for Matthew. And we were informed by the school support teacher, which many of us might know more, better as a resource teacher, and the school board, sorry, and the principal, that the school board doesn't do these assessments until students are in Grade Three. And at that time, Matthew was in Grade Two, and it was November of his Grade Two year. So we decided to go with a private psychologist recommended to us by our school team. Within four months, he was diagnosed with ADHD and specific learning disabilities in reading and writing. When hearing his diagnosis, I was both terrified and relieved. I was terrified because I knew nothing about dyslexia. I have four years of an undergrad, especially, or majoring in psychology. I have my Bachelor's of Education, and I've also completed reading additional qualification courses for teachers. But yet, I knew nothing more than the average person about dyslexia. I was also relieved at the diagnosis because, number one, it meant that I wasn't a crazy mom anymore who thought their child had something learned differently. And number two, it meant that I could take, like, these papers in hand that cost $2,000, this official diagnosis, and I'd be able to bring it to the school and get some answers and get a program set in place where he was going to be able to learn to read. So, sorry. After that, we had, oh, so, sorry, like I said, the school had been amazing at accommodating him even before we got those papers. And his confidence has increased, and he's happy and healthy, but his reading hasn't progressed. When I asked the school team what reading intervention he would receive, I was told that there was none. This past month, though, they have set up a reading intervention program, but Matthew does not qualify because his reading levels are not low enough, and there's other schools, children in the school that qualify, and their reading levels are lower. Matthew right now is in the middle of Grade Three, and he's barely reading at the end of a Grade One level. One thing I've learned about dyslexia in my research is that early intervention is key, and that if these students are taught phonics in an explicit and synthetic way, or systematic way, they can learn to read like everyone else. And this method has been proven to be helpful for all students, not just those with dyslexia. So we have the research and we have the proof, yet embarrassingly enough, us teachers don't know anything about it. How can this be happening? What age are we living in? I know what Matthew needs, and I know what he's capable of, and I know that early intervention is important. When I asked the school, what reading, sorry, when I asked the school if I could hire a tutor to come to the school during the school days, they said that they don't accept outside interventions. So right now, I don't know what my options are. I could quit my job, like many other, sorry, many other parents across Ontario and Canada have done, to pull Matthew from school and homeschool him. I could take a course and tutor him myself. I could try to find a certified tutor in London, because there aren't any around our area, but I'd be lucky to find one who has an opening. And then, that's two to three nights a week of one-hour sessions and a 45-minute drive each way. There go our family dinners and extracurricular activities. And we do have to have some nights at home. To what extent? Am I helping him versus depriving him of the childhood that he deserves? How do I have that balance? He wants to be outside, playing, and building, in our shop. Did I mention that he has ADHD? How can I expect him to be at school for six hours, doing something that he has a hard time with, and then after that, working for another hour at home? My goal at the end of all this is not to hurt the teachers of the school boards and the Ministry of Education or the government, but my goal is to do what's best for the students, for all students. The proof is there, the results are there, but our system is broken, and we need to change that. So thank you to the Ontario Human Rights Commission for taking the first step in the right direction for our kids.
So you mentioned a little bit about teacher education, and so I'm just wondering, how do you think teacher education should change so that teachers do feel well-equipped to address the needs of people like Matthew?
I mean, it needs to change in a lot of ways. So first, it needs to start at teachers' college, and they need to be aware of the best practices, and... And like was said before, there's no one way to teach all students, and everyone is different, and we do learn that in teachers' college. But we should be learning the science behind reading. I didn't know that there was the science behind reading, and I do feel gypped in my education in that way. But I don't know when this information came about either. I had teachers' college 11 years ago. But as a teacher now, I do feel like if there's information like that out there, why was I not told and given that information so I could best help my students? And how am I only finding out about this now, being a parent of a child who's dyslexic? Many teachers in schools, even right now, my colleagues, they don't even know that this is happening, even tonight or around Ontario.
Well, and I would add, like, the one teacher earlier tonight said the same thing. She didn't know about it, because many times, teachers have just got reading, right? They're not people with dyslexia like the latest speaker or whatever, right? So they're not thinking about that, that they have students that learn differently or specifically have those learning disabilities.
You also mentioned being a rural family, which is a little bit different than the families that have spoken before. Do you think that that has had an impact on the kinds of supports? You mentioned needing to come into town to access supports. Have there been any other impacts of being sort of geographically more isolated?
I mean, I think, I'm not sure if it's different being in the rural community, because from the stories that I've heard, everyone is having trouble accessing this stuff. So maybe my first initial response would be yes, because it is hard to dig deep and find the resources and figure out what our children need. But it seems like most people are having those difficulties anyway, so.
Well, and to add to that, we're pretty early on from the speakers I've heard. So Matthew's only in grade three, right? But I could see the exact same thing happening if we just let this drag on. So it'd be nice to know. If you knew exactly what to do, everyone would be doing it, right?
All the time wasted to try and just figure out what's available and how to get it.
Exactly.
Yeah, you talked about getting training so that you could tutor your son, and so many parents end up becoming their children's tutor and teacher. How do you think that changes the relationship, the parent-child relationship, when you can't just be mom and dad, but you also have to be... Like Darcy made a point earlier about how challenging it is to have parents who are teachers. But do you think it changes that relationship when you're having to fulfill that role as well as being a parent?
Now, you're going to make me cry. That's a huge struggle, because I want to spend my nights with him, enjoying him, but he fights me every single night to read and to do the program that I feel is best for him. And so I don't get to have those, like, joyous nights as often, because I'm constantly in a battle, and it's hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we've heard some heart-wrenching experiences. They're not stories, they're life. We've heard some heart-wrenching experiences, and I do hope that, I trust that we will actually take them away and just continue the battle with you. We're at the point now where we will invite those who've signed up to present the open-mic session. And I know that many of you have much to say, much you would like to say. But because we'd like to get to as many as possible, we're going to ask you to abide by the two to three minutes that you have been given. And I don't like to do this, but if I need to, I will actually just check in with you to make sure that we stay on time. And our first speaker is, is it Diane Durandy?
I have a spoken word presentation. Dear genius, yes, I'm talking to you. You whose eyes betray the wounds of being the bully or the bullied in the schoolyard, remembering to this day the feeling of the pit in your stomach that day when you gave the wrong answer in class and everybody laughed. I hear what you think you can or cannot do and what your third-grade teacher sent home in notes about missing the brain's effort or focus boats. It's time to cross the moat from that world with your banner unfurled and wearing the coat of endless possibilities. It's been many score that the hallowed doors of learning have been my muse. School may bore you, but I refuse to lose my vision of genius for all who are bruised. And in my cruise, this is what I've seen. The truth about learning is ever-changing. They keep rearranging the stories as the academy jostles for glory, inventing new labels that pain and worry, the cruelest form of allegory and changing nothing that really matters. If reading or math caused stress or your writing's a mess, then your teachers failed you and never addressed mastery of the basics for learning success, or impressed on you the value of knowing some things with certainty. Your foundation had cracks, so you made your own hacks, cheated or guessed, hid your shame to this day in a game you weren't equipped to play. But don't assign blame. They did their best. They're like the rest. Teachers are also in a system that is mastery-less. Plus, they were trained to teach to the test. They call you slow, but you're really too fast to stay with the pack and in your mind go back and forth with thoughts and visions, suffering derision because you don't go with their flow. If they only knew what you know, if there was time to explore, they could ask for more. But the rush to cover the curriculum means that instead, you lie in your bed wondering, "What's wrong with my head?" There's nothing wrong with you, you who seek only to accept and be accepted in love, but feel a need to succeed, to rise above the others or fall behind. It's not a race, sweet child of grace. Their taste for haste exacerbates confusion and comes from an illusion of separation from the whole, resulting in waste of your potential as you play the wrong roles, chase unfulfilling goals, and eat from the bowl of limitations. It's time to get straight to the point of your greatness. It's in you, but you don't know it. You haven't learned how to consistently show it. It's never too late to return to the gate and lay a new foundation. When you join the genius nation, you'll with focus and poise make some mastery noise and claim your unique location with unmeasurable elation. Stand up, because you matter. Without you, the world would be flatter, and destiny's pattern would be missing a part. You were born to make life your art, so start today to craft a new way. I've got your back. Trust me with your heart. Love, your soul.
Thank you. Stella Lloyd, please.
Hello, my name's Stella. I am currently a high school student at the Toronto District School Board. And despite me having a really vast, complicated history that I'm not going to get into, just because a lot of people already talked about that and they're very similar, I'm going to talk about the experience I'm facing now in high school. I've noticed a lot when I'm writing tests or doing things like that, that I'll look over at my classmates, and they'll be written already three pages when I'm just on my introduction sentence. I've noticed a lot that a lot of teaching experience, instead of going out and doing something that personally I would learn better by, you're in a classroom redoing the same essays and stuff like that. Being dys... I'm dyslexic. Being dyslexic has made me feel like I am not intelligent, I am below everyone else. I'm also in the gifted program, so I'm in this high, high-intelligent environment where everyone gets a 90s. If you don't have a 99, you're not good enough. Being in that space and not being able to do everything, when I have to read a 200, 2,000-page book, it takes me a long time. When the person next to me reads it in two weeks, it will take me much longer. That is an issue I'm facing, that it drains me so much, but everyone else, it doesn't affect. And when they're writing this story or essay, whatever they have to write, I'm still stuck on, "Well, what do I want to do this on? Like, how do I format an essay? How do..." Like, these things I was just never taught, because I was taught so... It took me such a long time to learn how to read. I didn't get to learn how to format an essay, or what MLA formatting, or what Chicago formatting is. I still do this day face a very severe anxiety from being dyslexic, as well as other things, as well as having depression. And that has led to suicidal attempts and suicidal stuff like that. So I just think it's really important that, like, even in high school, that dyslexia is known, and it's like, hey, this person, yeah, this person thinks in a different way, but they aren't dumb, they aren't not intelligent, they're actually really intelligent. And if you give them the opportunity to learn and you give them, like, I'm a hands-on learner, I learn better that way. If you give me a test, I will not do as well as if I have to give an oral presentation. Like, there's just things like that that the school board and curriculum was not designed for. They were designed for one type of student, and guess what? There is not one type of student, not just dyslexia, but there's so many things more. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. When I heard I was going to be in the open-mic section of the presentation, I thought I had to be funny. Thank goodness, that's not the expectation. I want to thank, just acknowledge, the braveness in this room, the presentations that I've heard so far, so powerful. And I'm so glad that my son is able to be in the room and to hear your stories. Thank you so much. Wow. I'm, as a result of those presentations, feeling a sense of inspiration, but also a lot of anger. And I think that needs to be acknowledged, because I'm picking up on that myself. My time is short, so let me cut to the chase about several things I want to address. One, early screening and psychoeducational assessment. I should share that I wasn't diagnosed until I was in my last year of law school. So there gives an example. When you have, if you had a car, so pretend that you have a car, and every morning, you struggle to get that car started. And when you do get it started, you can get it to 30 kilometers per hour, let's say. And so you take it to a mechanic, and the mechanic says, "Oh, there's somebody that can tell us exactly what's wrong with that car, but it's going to take about two to three years for us to figure it out." Why would we not tolerate that with a car, but for some reason, it's okay to tolerate that with our kids? Unacceptable. My time is short, and I'm going to try to be respectful of the time, but I want to skip, if I can, to technology and resources. My son was given a Chromebook and Lexia, I believe, that was on the Chromebook, which is wonderful to have, except you have a teacher that has 30-some students to look after. If he gets that Chromebook, and he stumbles, and he doesn't quite understand what to do next, he spends the time pushing the buttons. And maybe 45 minutes later, she can get around to him. So I just want to make the point that the tools are wonderful and useful, but it's not a replacement for having teacher-assisted and competent teacher assistants to help with those resources. My son here, you can imagine, goes to school every day, and for six hours, he'd say, "I'm going to do time." Or, "I'm going to hell." And how sad is that? Six hours a day, he spends just trying to stay off the radar and was very successful at it. Except, he wasn't very successful at learning. More specialized resources. And I know that it always seems to come down to political will and money. But we need more specialized resources, like the building that you're in today. And frankly, better information about the resources that exist, because some of us are stumbling into those resources just by accident. So we need more resources, and we need more information about the resource. You've heard the phrase that it takes, when, at a shrinking watering hole, the animals begin to look at each other a little differently. And I'm hearing a theme in the room tonight that I want to leave you with about competition, because we have limited spaces. And so it's real, we say, "Yeah, I would love to advocate to grow the pie, but I want my son to have one of those pieces of the pie." And so one of the things that I'm learning in this little journey is, yes, we have to advocate, but I'm learning too that you have to be unapologetic about advocating for your child. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle Newman.
Moderator, could you give me one, two, and three for minutes?
I will do that.
Okay, thank you. So, honorable panel and audience as well, thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Michelle Newman. My son, Miles Newman, has been diagnosed with severe learning disability. He also has ADD, auditory processing disorder, and visual difficulties. This year, Miles is at Amethyst in grade nine, and we are absolutely grateful for the professional and thorough care he is receiving here, not only academically, but emotionally and socially. I won't go into our story. Let's just say it began in JK, when my son looked at me and asked me, "God, Mom, why did God make me this way?" When he asked that question, it seems like yesterday. Over time, I knew I would need to be his biggest advocate. It's been a long, hard, and arduous journey. I made a wish list, thinking that I was coming before the Ministry of Education. I'm going to shorten that to the things that have yet to be discussed. The one thing, as a nurse, that I want to pull together is a team working together for a child. Thank you to the pediatrician. Fifty to 60% of kids with LD have ADD. And grade three was brought to our attention that this was an issue with Miles. What happened was, we were to fill out a simple form, both parent and teacher, and then the doctor prescribed a medication. The testing was only done once. He never was formally tested again. And six years later, we have discovered that the medication my son is on is completely ineffective in the classroom. Amethyst has assessment forms in the classroom and the residence to assess for AD symptoms. I would like to see more intensive training available to all teachers on ADD, adaptive strategies, and training using these assessment forms. I would also like every teacher and every family and every kid who has dyslexia to be able to see the documentary, "How Difficult Can It Be?", by the FAT City Workshop by Richard Overy. The last thing I want to mention, and the most important thing, is to speak to the Amethyst School and the one-year ability to be here. Right now, my son is at a grade 1.2 school level. There have been many roadblocks, and there's still some to discover. I am told that he can only come for one year. What about his right to read? Why is there not space for him to return a second year? I'll leave it at that.
And thank you also for offering the strategy, which I will now use. That is a three, two, one for others. So, thank you. Trevor Clark.
Pathetic is the word that I would like to describe the situations that I was put in and the learning that I was given. I went to a demonstration school for two years. Going into that school, I could read. Going into that school, I could read all of 100 words. Exiting that school, I could read all of 1,000. I left that school truly demoralized because only being able to read 1,000 words is not a lot. The average person in grade eight can read around 40,000 words. So I left the school very demoralized, thinking, if a school that's designed to teach me how to read cannot teach me how to read, there's nothing out there for me. So I avoided reading like it was the plague. I continued doing so, but eventually I just got fed up with my bosses yelling at me for making mistakes because I couldn't read. This truly upset me. So I sat down and I went through all of the research and figured out what all of the programs were doing and what these school boards were missing. So I ended up basically cherry-picking from programs and going through all of the research and hiring my own private tutor. And within three months, I made more improvement to reading than the 12 years that was given to me for the education system. That's truly pathetic that I could outperform the school board in three months. There are rock-solid programs out there that teach reading. I'm truly a smart person and I believe now with all of the research that I know that I know a lot more about reading than most people that work at these demonstration schools. That is sad. And I will leave you with this last question. So you can take a student and give them 200 hours of a program that would work for most people, or you could take a really rock-solid program that could work in about 50 hours. And I would need the additional 150 hours so I could get there. It only takes around 200 hours to get an average dyslexic how-to-read out of a basic program. So I ask you this again. Is 50 hours better of a really, really good program so I can get the extra 150 so I could learn to read? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Joanne Betrand.
Hi. I'm a former principal and teacher of special education. I also had my specialist in special education. And when I went to a workshop on reading when I was 50 years old, I learned that I could not teach a non-reader to read. I then sought training on my own because I had a passion. I wanted my non-readers to learn to read. And I have to say, the science of reading is not rocket science. You don't have to buy expensive materials. In fact, sometimes we have those expensive materials, but they're not used correctly. Children, like I've just heard about, are left on computers to be frustrated because there's not a person to accompany the program. Sometimes, an expensive program that costs $5,000 to teach one teacher happens. I've become a tutor since I've retired. And what's happened is one of my students was told after 100 hours of a really good, expensive program that he no longer needed to learn to read, that despite his inability to read words with more than two syllables, he can't read words with more than two syllables. He was told by the school, there was nothing left for him. So the parents were so upset, they kept going to the school, going to the school. So they put him on this computer program without a teacher to be frustrated again and again. So the science of reading is not rocket science. It involves structured literacy, which involves a bit of phonological awareness and a well-taught phonics, which is not difficult to do. It involves word-reading at the level that a student is, not from leveled literacy books. When you're learning consonant vowel consonant patterns, those are the books you should be reading. That's called control text or decodable text. It's not difficult to do. We want to train fluency, which is not difficult to do with this vocabulary. We want to teach comprehension with these same parameters. And we teach spelling with these same parameters. And then we progress slowly and successfully. It's not hard to do. And this can be done in a universal design model. Everyone can benefit from this, but for some people, it's essential. And that's what we have to do. Thank you.
Vania Josette.
Hi. First of all, I just want to say that one of the things that I found as a parent to a special-needs child is that you have to dedicate your life to finding solutions. And it's exhausting. Us parents are exhausted. I have been at schools multiple days a week with my son, crying at meetings, at doctors, seeking out information, seeking out solutions, hitting roadblocks, coming up with hours and hours and hours of information, but no solutions to help my son. Early on in my search for help for my son, I knew that it wasn't going to happen at our local school board, which was here in London. So with all my research, not told by anybody, I knew that Amethyst existed. So I set my sights on that when my son was in grade two. And I worked, and I worked, and I worked, and trudged along. He'd never learned to read in the traditional school system. Finally, he did apply to come here to Amethyst. I live here in London, but I had to send my son away to live somewhere else. We live a 10-minute drive away, but he lived here for two years. The hardest part for my son was not learning how to read. He's highly intelligent. He learned to read. The hardest part was overcoming his belief that he was dumb, his low self-esteem, and gaining his self-worth. That took the hardest work for him with the support of the team here at Amethyst. He's currently in grade nine. He's getting all As and on track to be on the honour roll. He reads at above-grade level. But the most powerful thing for him was getting back his self-esteem and self-worth that should have never, never been compromised to begin with. He should have never, ever felt stupid, left out, or left behind. And that has been the most painful thing, trying to bring my son back up. He loves this school and the support that he received here. He regularly comes back here. We come back nearly twice a month to come hang out with his friends and his teachers. But it's such a disservice to all our kids with learning disabilities that such a select few get this opportunity. And if you do not dedicate your whole life, you will get nowhere. Even if you do dedicate your whole life to serving and providing and accessing services for your child, it's still an impossible task. And I don't understand. He has a right. He has a right to read. And I think everybody should, and I don't understand. And I feel so hurt for any child who is just sitting there wondering, why not me? Why not me?
Thank you. Our next call on, is it Rena Mack?
Hi. I've got hundreds of things that I'd want to say, but I'm going to stick to my script. I'm Rena Mack. I'm the mother of a mildly dyslexic 24-year-old son who made it. But my story goes back like 20 years now, right? So I've been on this journey. Your stories are my stories. He's doing great now. He's a brilliant industrial designer and a pilot. But he suffered needlessly. You know the story, right? It's the same story 20 years later. I became his tutor. I've tutored other kids. I know all the heartbreaking stories. And that's why I'm a founding member and a past president of Decoding Dyslexia, Ontario. We're a grassroots organization that formed five years ago by parents frustrated. By then, you know, most of us had learned a lot about dyslexia and we thought if we band together, we can get the change that's needed. I thought it would be easy because by then I had learned to teach some students to read. And, you know, teachers in the public education system could just do kind of like what I do. Thank you, Commission, for hearing, listening, and acting. So Decoding Dyslexia has contacted the Ministry of Education many times and were given lip service. I personally, just on my own, wrote to the Minister of Education after I had a chance meeting with him, waiting to get into the visitors' gallery at Queens Park when Joel Hardin introduced a private members' bill for Dyslexia Awareness Month back in November. So in the letter, I just thanked, you know, saw him, looked him in the eye, said, we need curriculum change. So I wrote him a letter and, you know, reiterated that we need to teach reading because our kids with dyslexia don't just pick it up by being exposed to books, by looking at the first letter and pictures and context. They need systematic, explicit instruction. The response letter I got came from Special Education and asserts that they've provided guidelines. They claim their curriculum is already based on universal design and that boards of education and teachers just need to implement the guidelines. Right? It's ludicrous. It sounds like they're expecting each teacher and school board to figure out how to deal with every complex case and simple case. I'm going to submit, I'd like to give you a copy of the letter that I got. It just shows the disconnect. And I don't think, everybody wants what's right. There's a lot of finger pointing. It seems like the ministry's pointing to the teachers and the teachers are, where's my training in reading? And I believe we can't deal with these thousands of people in the education system only through special ed. We need the basic curriculum to work for the most students that we can. My son would not need special education if he was given the right instruction from the get-go.
Thank you. Our next speaker is a name I've actually been struggling to pronounce. So it's Hubert Van, because I could not, Van?
Nieckirk.
Nieckirk?
Nieckirk.
Nieckirk. Hubert Van Nieckirk.
Perfect. Thank you, panel, dignified guests, parents. But the most important people here are the students. The person that we're all here for are the students. And the bravery I've seen with the students is amazing. It just inspires me. Jeez, I'm nervous. So I'm a retired special education teacher in a congregated setting in this school board here. So I can say a lot of things that teachers don't normally get to say because they're worried about repercussions. Some won't speak here today or any other day as long as they're working. So I had a student come into my congregated class. I taught at a high school that had previously been diagnosed with a mild intellectual disability. So I didn't know this student at all. His diagnosis had actually now been lowered so that he could enroll in my congregated class with fewer students. There were several other students that had other, you know, multiple disabilities. Parents went along with this new designation because it was recommended to them and they were just lucky and happy to have him back in school. He had severe anxiety along with other significant disabilities that kept him from attending a regular classroom. He'd lost all hope and will to continue in school. He already had three high school credits, two of which were at an alternative-type school. And due to his issues, his anxiety and all his other issues he had, he had missed an incredible amount of school. Resource staff were not made available to him to take regular courses in a smaller setting. And this definitely had been asked for. He also knew that there was no point in doing the work since this school board would not allow him to receive any credits with a developmental disability diagnosis. So this is kind of a student that was failed all the way through. He didn't get the help he needed. He was capable of doing the work and receive credits, but was denied because of discriminatory and ableist practices of this school board. He had lost total hope. I showed some of his writings that he did independently, mostly about how he was feeling to an English teacher. And she would have given him a 75% mark in her grade 11 class. So it's one thing to learn how to read, but it's another thing to have it all taken away from you. The student did not receive what he needed to be successful, while with a few changes, he could have been. His right to advance his reading and so many other things were denied. They were stifled. There was several emails and requests that went back and forth, of course, to the Superintendent of Special Education, things like that. But no, nothing was, nothing further was given. The system failed the student and so many more. And failed me. I would have probably stayed teaching for another two or three years. But because of the system that there is, you kind of give up hope yourself. And teachers feel gutted.
Just checking in. Sorry to cut you off, but I'm just checking. Just beyond the time.
Teachers, along with parents, feel gutted by a system that does not support them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry. And I do apologize for having to cut. As I say, I know there's so much we would want to say, but the time just doesn't allow us to allow that. Our next speaker is Jenny Gray.
I had a small prepared speech, which I'm not sure I'm going to follow. So I'm the daughter of a dyslexic. I am the sister of a dyslexic. And each and every one of you, you can do whatever you want to do, hands down. I went to university. I studied French linguistics extensively. I am a French linguist. I teach kids how to read French. I do it because I think dyslexics, pardon the phrase, are the norm. I didn't know other kids didn't know how to read. So you just know how they think, growing up in that situation. So when I started teaching kids to read, I was taught, help them. Just help them, Jen. There's a lot of French immersion in the small town nowhere where I'm from. And can you help them? I went, but I'm not a teacher. Like, I have no desire to be one. And because I think their job is incredibly stressful. So that's what I do privately. But now tutoring is becoming a very large business because teachers have their hands tied with a lot of things and not one of them is going to stand up today and say their piece. And I understand that and respect that because of the situation they're in. But I also think there needs to be a change. This is a 45-year-plus battle. Panel, thank you for finally making it understood that there is a situation, that there is a breakdown in communication between ministry, boards, parents, everyone. There's a huge breakdown. So we need a structured system to teach kids how to read. Because I do it for FSL and because every child that I get is not perfect in their eyes. I teach from a structured, explicit method. I teach them so they learn because every child has the right to read. Every child should be able to read. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we have two more speakers and the next will be Christine Collard.
Hello. My name is Christine Collard. I'm from the small town of St. Thomas, Ontario, and my son attends the Thames Valley District School Board. Our experience with gaining access to intervention for our son, who has a diagnosed reading disability, has been much like other people have talked about in this room tonight. As parents, we're left frustrated, upset, baffled, and very concerned for our son's future. Our son was flagged very early on through Thames Valley early identification process in kindergarten as having a language-learning difficulty. in kindergarten as having a language learning difficulty. It was made, it was suggested to us that we read more with him at home and work with him more at home. We had already been working with him at home. And in fact, we didn't know how much more we could possibly work with him at home. His early intervention consisted of volunteer reading programs with untrained volunteers and infrequent visits from the speech and language pathologist. It really seemed like no one knew how to help him. I had my son's younger, I was off on maternity leave, so I decided to extend my parental leave to try to figure out how to help my son learn to read. I'm coming to the end of this year, and I still don't have the answers. I've enrolled in Orton-Gillingham training. I'm taking a course through Queen's University on communication disorders. I'm still not clear on what I'm going to do to help him. We decided to have a formal diagnosis, a formal private diagnosis done for our son. And I really thought, after we got that diagnosis, I thought it would open up the keys, we would be given the keys to the kingdom, and he would be given tons of intervention. Well, he wasn't. We were given a Lexia 5 program. In grade two, most of the work was done at home. I had to fight with him nightly to try to get him to complete the program because he was tired. All of his energy was used up at school, trying to understand what was going on. We did find out this year that there is a small teacher follow-up component that's necessary for Lexia to work properly. And he was being met with on such an infrequent basis that he had progressed to Level 7 in Lexia. And when he finally met with the learning support teacher this year in November, he was bumped back to Level 6. We were devastated. This system seems unfair. My research, in my research, I've discovered programs like Empower, and they're available at schools all around us, but not at our school. I've asked the principal why it's not available at our school, and she just said that we don't have the staff for that type of programming. I'm not, I know that there's programs out there. If there's ESL students, we have ESL programs. If there's gifted learners, we have gifted learning programs. So why don't we have programs for students with reading disabilities?
Thank you.
I guess I want to say, my son puts on a great friend at school. His report card state, this is just not my bias, that he's a very pleasant boy and he's a pleasure to teach. But he puts on a good face at school. At night, when he comes off the bus, I can see his anger and his frustration. And I have to give him time to calm down because he's so upset about having to understand what's going on at school all day.
So I'm just checking.
Okay.
Give you about a minute beyond.
I think the system right now is really sending an implicit message to our children with reading disabilities. It's sending the message that their learning isn't important and people don't care about them. My son has told me this year that he feels like he's stupid and he feels dumb. As a parent, nobody wants their child to feel that way. And I really hope that this investigation will help bring hope and help our kids get the help that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Jeff Babin.
Hello. I wasn't really sure what to expect coming here. I have three children, seven, five, and four. It's tough, you know? We're just starting to go through all this right now. I don't know where to go. I have not, like, it's tough. I'm dyslexic. I try to teach him what I can at home. We got Chromebooks for him. I try to search online, trying to find out what the best programs are. I don't know what to do. I'm lost. Every night, we read, we go through the decoding books. I do everything I can. But a couple of days later, we just revert back to the same thing. I go to the school, start doing, you know, we do the interviews, we get the start-of-school interviews, midterms. And my son's at a kindergarten reading level, right? How do I help him? What do they do? I asked him, I said, "What do you do? How could you help?" Well, he's a December kid, right? So I don't go. He'll adjust eventually. I said, "I think my son's got dyslexia." "Well, how do you know?" I said, "Because I was diagnosed with it. I see the same traits in him that I had." You know, I had to plow through that educational system to get where I am now. I don't know. Anyway, I'm just looking for help. That's all.
Thanks to everyone, our presenters, open mic, and others who are here. I will actually call the chief commissioner up to give some closing remarks now.
Thank you. Thank you for staying with us this evening. I know it's been hard at times, especially to hear your experiences from other people and to see that they've gone through the same thing can be both empowering and, I think, disheartening. So I think one thing that really resonated with me tonight is that our children know when something isn't working. And they know when they're very young. And the problem is, is that they blame themselves. They don't blame usually their parents or the system. They actually think there's something wrong with themselves. And that itself is truly devastating. I think we've also heard from parents who are desperate, frantic, and often feel alone. They don't know how to navigate the system. They know something's wrong. They feel time is slipping away. And they're doing everything they can. They're spending all their extra hours reading to their kids, trying to take care of their mental health, and then worrying about their future in every spare moment. The parents who are here today told us about how they've basically dedicated their lives to finding solutions for their children and to navigating a system that seems very complex and ever-changing and different, depending on where you're living. We heard about being an unapologetic advocate for your child. But I think today, by coming here and sharing your story, you've done something more. You've advocated for the children and families who can't be here. There are a lot of families who don't even know that their children are struggling. They might have one or two jobs. They get passed through from grade to grade and assume that everything's okay because the experts are in charge. So by coming here today and sharing your stories as difficult as it has been and the journeys that you've been on for years and decades, some of you, I hope that that's a start towards actually changing our system so that your stories are no longer the norm and that we actually have a system that can deliver the right to read. I think if our children can't learn to read in our education system, something is very wrong. I was thinking that we called this "Right to Read" because it was a good hashtag, probably. But it probably could also be called "The Right to a Childhood" and maybe even "A Right to the Future." So thank you. I hope that together, we can shed light on some of the solutions you talked about and the challenges. And hopefully, not just change things at the board level, but hopefully structurally, at the ministry level, at the teachers' college, and at the boards, and for parents. I know this is a complex system, and it can be very difficult to understand all the different moving parts. But your stories are definitely helping us to see the bigger picture. So thank you.